Each point of F, put a neighborhood around it and take the union of all of them. The union of all of them will be open and will cover capital F. And then I could do the same thing on this side. But the problem is that, well, what if the sets, what if these open set, we take all these points and we draw these open sets? How do I know that, you know, somehow there's not some overlapping going on in between?
Let your P be the distance between Y and the opposing.
The radius of these, of these open sets has to be chosen small enough, right? I have to choose them small enough that the U and the V will not, this is gonna be the hard part, right? I can make open sets that contain F and F prime pretty easily. But I have to make them of the right, um, the right radius. So for, let's just take any point Y in capital F, right? I wanna know how big can I make my, can I make my radius? So I'm going to set my radius, I'm gonna call it P sub Y. So here's my, here's my point, right? Now, that point Y, I'm comparing its distance to the whole set, capital F prime. So that's what that definition up there is supposed to help me with, right? So, um, somehow, this is just a number, which is the smallest of all distances from this point, this fixed point X to the whole entire set. So. One half of D of what?
No, Y and.
Y and.
Prime.
F prime. Right, let's try that, so that, let's see if this might work for us. So we take the distance from Y to all the points of F prime, right? All the way, we measure all these distances, we find the smallest one. But we don't wanna take that because the trouble is there'll be some point on the F prime side that's gonna also create a radius. It's gonna be, they're, they're still gonna overlap, that's why the one half is in there. Because we put a one half coming from both sides, then that's gonna add up to less than one between the two sides. So let's try that, and then I'm gonna do the same thing for the capital F prime. So for, um, each Y prime in capital F prime, I'm gonna set P prime sub Y prime equal to one half the distance from Y prime over to F. Okay. Uh-oh, we've gotta fix that, uh, a little bit of a. Sorry guys, there's a little earthquake going on, no, just kidding.
Trying to get the whole board again.
That's a good idea.
There we go.
Thank you, so I have a little, I have a little question for you guys. So, the distance here is always at least zero, I'm taking the infimum of that. Could it equal zero? Like could, could any of these radii come out equal to zero? Because that would be bad. We're not really allowed to create neighborhoods with a radius of zero.
That will never happen because X and F are. And if we have, this is true, if we're saying that the distance is equal to zero, that means the point on F is the same point on F prime.
Well, every single one of these numbers could be greater than zero, but then the infimum could still equal zero. Now you could have it, you could have, uh, the distance, uh, you could create a sequence of points. Can you do that? Could I create a sequence of points in capital F prime that is converging to this point Y? So if I had that, let's just, let me draw a better picture.
Wait, they're disjointed, so the only way the distance is gonna happen is.
So let's say the Y is right over there on the edge of F, right? And then here's F prime, I agree, it's disjoint, but you could create a sequence here. Could, the question is, the question I have is, could, you know, as I measure all these distances, could, they're all positive. They're all positive, because these points are definitely dis, these two points, these are definitely distinct. Because Y does not live in F prime. So you're always comparing a point that's not in F prime to a point that is in F prime, which means these points are different, so every one of these numbers is greater than zero. The question is, could the infimum still be zero, right? And I claim no, because the set, capital F, is closed. So, and actually, so is, so is F prime. If this could happen, if, if you could create this sequence and the infimum of all of these distances was zero, what it would really mean is that this sequence of points converges to the point Y. And that would mean that Y is a limit point of F prime, but F prime is closed. So that means F prime contains all of its limit points, and Y is definitely not in F prime. Okay, I'm gonna write that down, because I think it's important, so just as a quick note here. If P sub Y, this is probably a little bit too hard. But I just, you know, it's, it doesn't hurt to review it a little bit here. So if this distance was zero, then, since capital F prime is closed, it contains all its limit points. Oh no! Which means.
Something to like prop it up on the back.
I wonder if we need something a little bit better.
Do you wanna use my phone to prop it to back?
Um, I'm just gonna try this, uh, it's more rigid.
Yeah, somehow there's not enough friction there, is there?
I think it should be. Not block the, uh, board.
Means Y, what was I trying to say? Which means Y is an element of F prime. Contrary to F, intersect F prime being empty. Okay, that's what I was trying to say. Is that a little working out?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Should be good enough. Yeah, I appreciate you trying to do that for me. Okay, does that make sense, guys? So the point is, uh, so thus, P sub Y is always greater than zero. And similarly, so is P sub Y prime, P, P prime sub Y prime. Okay. Similarly, P sub prime sub Y prime is always greater than zero as well. So all of those numbers are, are at least zero, okay? So, is everybody good? So now how am I gonna make my, how am I gonna make my set U? Remember, we have to come up with U and V, and I think we're ready to do it.
Y. Oh, and neighborhood of Y.
Neighborhood around Y, radius P sub Y.
Union.
Union.
Y, yeah, Y belong to.
F, exactly, that's it, that's exactly right. Okay, this is clearly an open set containing capital F. So clearly, open, and it contains capital F. Is it not working?
No, it moved.
I think it's good. Did it slide?
Yeah, it slid. Here, just put, just put my phone instead of this guy.
Yeah, there might be a better way to do that. It's just a little bit.
We're getting all the details, so.
Yeah. People are having plenty of time to write all this down. Is that maybe a little more likely to work?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you guys for trying to get that.
McGuyver.
Exactly. How many people are here anyway? So that's already more than half the class, so that's great. I'm gonna assign each of you to go to one of the people not in the class that will, that don't even need the video. But that's okay, I still like to have the video. Uh, okay, so we have that, and then similarly, what am I gonna let V be equal to? Union. Neighborhood. Y prime. P prime of Y prime.
And Y prime is in F prime.
Exactly, F prime, just like that. So also, um, that's also open, and it contains F prime. Okay, so then the last thing now is I wanna make sure that it, that the two sets are disjoint, okay? So I'm going to claim somewhere, need to claim here. Just a little bit more room for this, I'm gonna claim that U intersect V is empty.
Can we just use what we did, what it said before?
Well, for, we basically, um, we constructed our U and our V using these radii for, to make it work, but we still should show that it really does work. Okay, so how do you show that a set is empty?
By way of contradiction, or some reason element.
Exactly, so by way of contradiction, suppose, this won't take much room, it's pretty easy. Let's suppose we have some point, uh, I'll call it Z, which is in U intersect V. Okay, so if it's in both U and V, then it's in one of those neighborhoods, right? For each of those cases, so there exists a Y in F, and there exists a Y prime in F prime, such that, such that what? The distance from Y to Z, so in other words, it's gonna be in this neighborhood, so the distance has to be less than P sub Y. And the distance from, uh, Z to Y prime is less than P prime of Y prime. Okay, we've seen this kinda argument many times, right? Okay, so we have that left so far, so then, what are we gonna do to get our contradiction?
Well, then I use the triangle inequality.
Exactly, so we're gonna end up looking at the distance from Y to Y prime, right? Well, that has to be less than or equal to by the triangle inequality for the metric, the distance from Y to Z plus the distance from Z to Y prime. Okay, and the distance from Y to Z plus the distance from Z to Z prime would be, this would be less than P sub Y plus P sub Y prime, P prime, Y prime, I should say. Okay, now, one of those two numbers, one of those two numbers is bigger than the other, I don't know which one. But we could just say, without loss of generality here, if, if P sub Y is, uh, greater than or equal to P prime sub Y prime. Let's just assume that without loss of generality. Okay, if that's the case, then I can replace this one with 2P sub Y. And 2P sub Y, going back to here, 2P sub Y is going to equal the distance from Y to capital F prime. So, so what you're saying now is that, and what was that again? That was the infimum, if, this is the infimum of all of the distances from Y to any point of F prime. And yet, notice the strict, strict less than here, you have found a point of, of capital F prime where this distance is strictly less than what was supposed to be the smallest of the distances. This is the infimum here, right? So this is a contradiction to the definition of this infimum. So this is a contradiction. Does that make sense to everybody? Everybody comfortable with the infimum idea? It's just a minimum, basically. Infimum is just a fancy word for minimum, the minimum of all of these distances, and yet we found something smaller than that. You can't be smaller than the minimum of a, of a set. Okay, so that, that proves that every metric space is normal. If you really like that proof, the, you know, then, the, the proof that every metric space is regular is pretty much the same idea, the, the one of the proofs in the, in the list for the final. Okay, I've got some more problems here, I'm gonna go on back over here, are we, are we all okay with that one? This would be a little too much, I, you know, I realize that when I do these study sessions, I don't always think of exactly what's gonna be like the right level, but it has some of the ideas, you know? Like reviewing the properties of a metric is, is good. Reviewing this, this idea about limit points in a closed set is, is, is useful as well. So I think, I think it's, it's still worthwhile to do it. Okay, um, number, what number is this, five?
Yes.
Yes, this is number five. Okay, so let's. Let's do a couple of true or false items. Actually, um, okay, actually, these are all false. So let's give counter examples, okay? So they're all false, uh, I'm not gonna ask you true, false on the test, I'll just say, you know, this is false, give me a counter example, or this is true, prove it. So the first one is, the frontier of, the frontier of a set is equal to the frontier of the set. So, maybe we should remember the definition of the frontier. So the frontier of, of A, this is just the set of points of the whole space, right? Such that every open set containing X, right, every open set containing X meets both A and the complement of A, right? So this is the definition of the frontier. And, uh, it's just kind of a wordy description is all we have. So if I ask you for something like this, uh, you know, the first question to kinda ask yourself is like, what topological space would you be most comfortable thinking about, for examples?
Co-finite?
What, what's the topological space?
Oh, 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 natural number?
Natural numbers with the co-finite topology? The co-finite topology is the one where the closed sets are, are the finite sets in the whole space. So this is a counter, we use this for a lot of examples, I would say it's not the first thing I would think of though, because this is described in terms of the closed sets. So, um, this description here is in terms of the open sets. So we, it's okay, we can look at it, but I'm just saying, we're gonna have to make that mental leap that we have to look at the opposite of the, of the finite sets. So do you, do you have a, some particular space in mind? Okay, what do you wanna take A to be?
Even numbers, hold on, even numbers.
All the even numbers, okay, so just 2, 4, 6, 8, and so on. All right, so, um, what do you claim? So let's think about the frontier of that.
It's just the whole, whole S.
The whole natural numbers? So is every natural, so for every natural number, let's just check, so if I take any natural number once here, let's pick like 7. Every open set containing 7, does it include even numbers and odd numbers? It does, because the complement of that open set is finite, which means that the set itself can't be only even numbers or only odd numbers, because it would be missing infinitely many points, right? And there's nothing special about 7, is there? Could use 6, or 10, or whatever other number, so the frontier of this is the natural numbers. Now what's the frontier of the frontier of A then? So this is gonna be the frontier of the natural numbers. Well, this is gonna be a problem, right? Because if the, if you put the whole space here, the frontier of the whole space is always empty. Because why? Because if you put the whole capital X right here for A, then X minus that is empty, and it's impossible for an open set to meet the empty set. Okay, so this becomes empty, so you clearly see that they're not the same. That works great, that works great. Another example that you could use, if you want, just to think about another one, you could use, this is really the, for me, the first, uh, example of a topological space that I usually think of is the real numbers. And this would be great between now and Wednesday, to really just play with some of these examples again, again, and think about frontiers and closures. You guys could try to challenge your friends, like, see if you can, uh, each write a little quiz question for your study buddy, where you ask about the frontier, or the closure, or the interior of some set within some topological space. And, you know, this is a, this is a good example. So on something like this, if you took, um, A to be the rational numbers, just the rationals, then it turns out that, well, every open, so if I take any ra, any, sorry, if I take any real number at all, right? And any open set containing it, any open set containing that real number will have both rationals and irrationals in it. So the frontier is everything, it's very similar to this example, right? The frontier is everything, and therefore the frontier of the frontier of A now becomes empty again. So this would just be another very similar example. So that's a, that's a good, a good one. Um, okay, how about, is it, everybody okay with that? Okay, um, let's try another one, just practice a little bit more, and this is another false statement. The closure of A minus B is equal to the closure of A minus the closure of B. I'm gonna give everybody a couple minutes to think about this. See if you can give me a counter example that would illustrate that this is not true. Think you have one? Um, let's give people just another minute or so, do you think you have one? Let's just give everybody a little time. I just thought of another one. I thought of, I thought of a really good way to do it that's easy. Yannick, do you have an idea? What's your idea?
Um, we'll remember, doesn't matter.
Okay.
Then I take for A, the half open set from 1 to 0.
0 to 1, uh.
0 to 1, yeah, one side is open.
Like, oh.
And it's closed, yeah.
Like this?
And B is the, um, open set from 0 to 1.
Like this one? Like that? Okay, so let's check that out, we can check Yannick's example here, so the closure of A would be what?
A closed set from 0 to 1.
Closed on both sides?
Yes.
Okay, and what's the closure of B?
Same for B.
Same for B, so then when you subtract over here, you get the empty set, right? Okay, and what about A minus B? What is A minus B? It's just 0, and of course, the closure has to be bigger than that, so you know that, uh, well, actually, so in this case, singletons are closed, because you're in a T1 space, so the closure of A minus B would just be 0. So, these are not the same. That works. Um, did you come up with an example? Or did, actually, did anybody come up with a different example? What was your example? What was your example?
So I'm using the absolute value metric with a real number.
Okay.
And for, we can take any, A to be any open interval, so, for example, 1, 2, 3.
1 to 3, okay.
And then B equal to the other open interval from 4 to 5.
Oh, okay, 4 to 5.
So.
So the closure of A would be.
The closed interval.
Closed 1, 3, and the closure of B would be closed 4, 5. Okay, so then, uh, this one minus this one would be, this minus this is empty, right? Okay, and then what about the other side, A minus B? Close, so the A minus B is empty, right? So this is actually equal to it, right?
Yes.
Actually, you could probably fix this. Could we just fix it, just by changing this to 3? No.
Close, right?
Yeah, I have to close this one.
On the A, you said 3, you close.
Close like that? So now A minus B has just one, it's actually similar to this one.
When we get the closure of A minus the closure of B, it's not empty here, right?
Well, the closure, yeah, this set minus this set. Oh, I'm sorry, this set minus this set is, I was, for some reason, I was doing intersection in my head. Yeah, this is just, uh, this is just the interval 1, 3.
Yes.
Okay, sorry, let me go back, so over here, what did you have here?
Just open, open. But I have this one, 1, 3, and this is 4, 5.
The problem is now when you subtract these.
I have this one is 4.
Oh, this is 4. Like that? So now A minus B is just A.
Yes.
And that closure is that one.
Yeah.
It's not quite working.
Alex, uh, could you actually just explain a little bit about like the subtraction of sets?
Oh, it just means, uh, so here, here's the whole X here, and you've got A and B like this, A minus B is just this. It's just everything that's in A but not in B.
Okay, thank you. So those are different intervals, so when you subtract the 4, 5 from the 1, 3, that's not.
Yeah, I, I accidentally in my head, I was doing the intersection, that was my mistake. But yeah, so anyway, um, I, uh, I did have a different example, which is to just use, so for this, just use the trivial topology on anything you want. Uh, and as long as your sets are non-empty, if you use the trivial topology, remember, the only sets that are open are the empty set and the whole space, but that's also the only sets that are closed. So with the trivial topology, the closure of everything is the whole space, as long as it's not empty, right? So as long as A and B are not empty, this is everything minus everything, that's empty on this side. Okay, I'll write it down in just a second. Now on this side, uh, if you just subtract your two sets, as long as this is not empty, well, then this will be again, everything. So let me just give you an example. So another example, just take the real numbers with the trivial topology. And just do something like, you know, just take A to be anything you want, the set of 1, uh, take B to be the set of 2. Okay, so then, A minus B is just the set 1. The closure of that, the closure, the smallest closed set containing 1, if you use the trivial topology, it's the whole space, right? And the closure of 1 minus the closure of 2 is the whole space minus the whole space, which that is now empty. is the whole space minus the whole space, which that is now empty. So these are, these are not equal. They don't agree. So that's a, that's a, so, guys, you should be thinking about the discrete topology, the trivial topology, the absolute value topology, the Pythagorean topology, all of those classic ones. And then this natural numbers example that we talked about a minute ago with the co-finite topology is pretty commonly seen as well. There's other, there's some other topologies that, you know, you might be faced with. But these are the ones, if you're creating examples, I'm not gonna ask you to like, probably work with some really bizarre topology that you've never heard of before. Like, I'm gonna try and make it pretty nice, you know, where you can give an example without having to work too hard at it. I don't like the problem to be totally trivial, but I don't, it's not gonna be something that's like super hard either, you know. So I, I just wanted to kind of throw a couple of those at you. Um, okay, let me, I'm gonna do just a little bit more, but not a whole lot, because I do have to take a little bit of a break and then get ready for my other. Oh, I wanna do this problem. I'm sorry, I gotta do this problem. What number am I on? 6? Okay. I have to do this. This is a good question. So, suppose that F from X to the real numbers is continuous, and X is compact. Show that F is bounded. Uh, i.e., when I say that a function is bounded, I just mean that the set of F of little x, where little x is in capital X, this is often just, this is just the image of the function, right? Just write it that way. Uh, that this set is bounded right here. Okay, this is a, this is what I wanna do. I wanna show that this set is bounded. We have a continuous function, we're starting with a compact space. Right? So this is what we know so far. This is a pretty short problem. This would make a great test question, because it takes just a little bit of writing, not too much, but you have to know your, uh, theorems that we've learned recently. Okay? So, the domain is compact. We have a continuous, a continuous function, right? Have we seen that before? Have we ever talked about starting with a function where the domain is compact?
And it's onto the?
And if it was onto, so if we have a continuous surjective, a continuous surjection, then what can we say? What was the theorem?
Then the code domain is compact.
Then the codomain is compact. That's right. If we have a continuous function that's onto, then the output side is compact, assuming the inputs are compact. Is this onto?
No.
Not assumed, not assumed, so can't say that. So is that result relevant, then?
We can just change it.
One of my favorite tricks, guys, with functions. When I have a function that's not onto, I make it onto by just changing my codomain. I just replace the R with whatever the image of the function is. Okay, so F is certainly onto whatever it's onto, which is this set, actually, right? So we can just say, as a solution here, the image of little f is the set F of capital X. So, by, I think it was proposition 12. Proposition 12 in, in chapter 7. F of capital X is compact. So the image of a continuous function is always compact. It's not, it's not what R is. In fact, we know that R is not compact. Okay, but this one is compact. Okay, now how does that help us? We're trying to show that F of capital X is bounded.
So, one of the theorems says it's compact if and only F is closed and bounded.
If we're working, uh, in RN, right? Then compactness is equivalent to closed and bounded. So we can actually say that this is now bounded, right? Okay, so by, that's the Heine-Borel theorem. So by the Heine-Borel theorem, F of capital X is closed and bounded. It's closed and bounded, right? So, um, as a, as a quick little follow-up, this is also just very easy. As a quick little follow-up, then not only is F bounded, but F will actually attain its absolute maximum and minimum value. Okay, so this is actually, in Math 350, they call that the extreme value theorem. It's basically true in this more abstract context as well. So, um, show that F achieves a minimum and maximum value.